Alright, troops, I think we're ready to go. So, welcome everybody to tonight's meeting, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Commissioners of Town of Waxaw. So, this meeting is now called to order, and so would you please then stand with us, rise, and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for just a brief moment of silence? I think everybody may be seated. Alright, tonight's agenda, do we have any changes requested to tonight's agenda?
Yes, I'd like to move, um, the consent item number five, approval for the Waxaw Women's Club parking lease, down off the consent agenda for discussion.
Is that, uh, that be a new business item since we're still rolling, or Jeff, would it be old business?
Uh, I think it could be either, I would say maybe, uh, business.
Alright, we'll do that. Alright, that'll go under old business number two. Alright, any other requests? Alright, so with that change, I'm gonna look for a vote to, uh, motion rather, to, uh, approve tonight's agenda as amended. Motion?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended.
Alright, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
All the way around, okay, thank you. Alright, we have, uh, one comment tonight, under general public comments, I believe, Neil, if you'd like to come up and, for the podium, speak loudly, everybody's, uh, you almost have to put the mic close to your mouth or stand close to it. I know you sing that way, but...
No, I don't really need a mic though, so, thank you all. Uh, Neil Gimmon, owner of the Dream Chasers Brewery, live at, uh, twelve oh one Beckford Glen Drive, Waxaw, North Carolina. Uh, I would like to thank the Waxaw staff and the council for finally putting together a plan for the loading foods truck zone. Every business along East North Main Street gets deliveries, whether it be brewing supplies, wine, furniture, ice cream making materials, as well as boxes for display items that need somewhere where the delivery truck can park without blocking up the road. A ramp is still needed, and we're hoping that comes along very soon, especially since we're gonna be getting a very, very large grain order by the end of the week. In reading through the proposed ordinance loading zone, I'd like to make one request to move the end time from five o'clock to four o'clock. By four o'clock, usually all the deliveries have been completed, and several of our food trucks, including locally owned food trucks, need time for fires, grills, and pizza ovens to properly heat up. That extra hour means that they can start serving earlier. Thank you.
Alright, very good, clearly noted, and, uh, sure, Mr. Matt will look at that as well, so appreciate that, thank you Neil. Alright, so we'll drop down, there are no other comments, uh, anywhere, so, uh, we'll drop down to the consent agenda as amended. Uh, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Very good, motion is up, all in favor?
Aye.
All the way around, alright, unanimous, thank you. Alright, we don't have any recognitions, presentations, or public hearings tonight, so we will drop down to old business. So, first up is Town Manager Jeff Wells, consideration of adoption of the Town of Waxaw fiscal year budget.
Thank you Mayor, and good evening, everybody. And I'll just wait momentarily for our PowerPoint to pop up.
And thank you for the new screen, it looks good.
You're very welcome, yeah, and just, for the folks out there, the audience, that that screen, the board is seeing what's on the screen, uh, up here behind, that you all are seeing, and then also, we have a closed captioning now, that people can read on the, uh, YouTube feed, for, uh, not only people in the audience here, as you can see, it's a little bit delayed, uh, but it'll also be on the, uh, on the online feed as well. So, we are at the end of our normal process for budget work. We've completed our budget workshop on May ninth, and we had our public hearing on May twenty-third. Of course, this is the, the culmination of a multi-month process, typically lasts roughly about half a year, six to seven months on average, we usually get started in the holiday season, and then wind that up right around this time every year, and so, I don't really want to go over everything again unless there's something that you obviously want to revisit, we could certainly do that, but I'll just highlight this first slide, and then I can transition over to the, uh, to the required motions, then go over one other, uh, tidbit reminder for you as we go, go through that, but the total operating budget's nineteen million eight hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. The general fund is nineteen million seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, special revenue funds, eighty-three thousand dollars. Your capital improvement budget's three million six hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So, highlights of that, of course, are continuing our five-year capital improvement plan, maintaining the tax rate at thirty-eight and a half cents, which is the same tax rate we've had since the twenty eighteen, nineteen fiscal year, and then the other tidbit that a lot of people like to know is what is the value of a penny on our tax rate, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars is the approximate number. So, certainly happy to entertain any, any thoughts, questions, last-minute discussions, anything, uh, like that, but of course, we've gone over it, uh, twice now in, uh, public forum, and then countless other hours prior to that. You have three motions to make this evening, uh, the first one is on the operating budget and the budget ordinance, motion to adopt the twenty-four, twenty-eight capital improvement plan, and then the motion to adopt the twenty-three, twenty-four capital improvement budget and ordinance. And so, the other thing to, uh, remind you is about the contribution to the Downtown Waxaw Association, that's listed as a, uh, is listed as a professional service, so, once we're ready to make that expenditure in that line item budget, we'll bring that, that task, I guess, that expenditure to the board to approve, and then at that time, the DWA board members would recuse themselves from that vote to authorize us to make that contribution to the Downtown Waxaw Association Board, and that's through consultation with Charlie about how we, the town attorney, how we proceed forward with that. So, certainly happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, we've, uh, obviously been down the road, there's some questions that may or may not come up, so I'm gonna open it up to the board, any questions to Town Manager, Commissioner Simpson?
I just really wanna clarify, because I know it had come up in the past where Commissioner Westlick and I are on the Downtown Waxar Association, Inc. board, so, just to clarify that when that money gets allocated to the board, her and I will recuse ourselves as we will have a special resolution to allocate the funds to that particular board, correct?
That's correct, we will not, we will not cut that check to the association without getting that authorization from the board members that are able to.
So, that will be done at, at a separate time when we make that allocation down the, down the road in the future, correct?
Yes, that's correct, target sometime later this summer, after the DWA gets some of their startup things accomplished.
Thank you.
Alright, any other comments, thoughts, and questions? Again, we've gone, uh, through this, uh, very deeply on this stuff, and I do wanna say thanks to all of the staff, this is a large book, it's a large undertaking. So, any other thoughts and questions? Alright, hearing none, seeing none, we're gonna go to, uh, the first motion, so can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to adopt the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four operating budget and ordinance, ordinance two zero two three zero one zero.
Alright, very good, that motion is up, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, well done. Any questions on the capital improvement plan, do you, you wanna go over that again or not, or anybody have any questions, we're again going down this road during the culmination of all this work? Thoughts and questions? Alright, seeing none, hearing none, I'm gonna ask for a motion on that one, too.
Motion to adopt the twenty-twenty-four through twenty-eight capital improvement plan.
Alright, that motion is up, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, unanimous, all the way around, alright, makes the third one a little bit easier. Any questions, uh, from anybody on this, uh, capital improvement plan? Alright, hearing none, seeing none, I am going to ask again for a motion on that one, somebody make a motion?
Motion to adopt the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four capital improvement budget and ordinance, O R D two zero two three zero one one.
Alright, that motion is up, and look at that, red out there, that's good. Alright, motion's up, all in favor?
Aye.
All the way around, thank you very much. Alright, thank you Jeff, that's a, a lot of work.
Thank you Mayor, just can't tell you how proud I am.
You're very proud and should be with the entire staff and everybody that's contributed to this, board members that have weighed in on it several times, uh, culmination of a lot of, a lot of months of work, so, thank you for that. Alright, we're gonna move down to what was dropped down from the consent agenda, this is talking about the Waxaw Women's Club lease on the parking lot, so Jeff, I think you're gonna be up again, but I probably wanna ask who's got the question?
Oh, I do.
May the motion?
Yes.
Give the floor to you.
Open up that page. So, I don't know if it's Jeff or Ashley, and I know when we were talking about some of these negotiations, there was some discussion about, um, where the sidewalk meets the roadway, there is some cracked pavement there, and I just wanted to, maybe if we could just revisit it, what the conversation might have been that we've had with the Women's Club regarding that section of pavement?
Sure, yeah, so we've, we've learned that the DOT is going to be resurfacing that whole, uh, N C seventy-five section out there, uh, that will not start until next spring, the actual resurfacing of the, of the street. We discussed an opportunity with the Women's Club to potentially go ahead and do work out there on the sidewalk to nip a situation, uh, that was concerning to us. Uh, that was not something that they were interested in doing, which is fine, and so, this agreement pretty much is moving forward as was originally proposed, with of course, the, the slight increase in the, in the annual cost, the thirteen hundred dollars, and, um, that's, that's really it, and that's, our recommendation is to move forward with it as is, and we can, you know, continue to work with the DOT on the, on the sidewalk issues there. There's clearly, uh, issues with drainage there, which is why we feel that it is that way, and the DOT is aware of that, and we, we think that will be part of their work moving forward, and I see Ashley is here to fill in any gaps that I'm not remembering, so...
I guess the question that I had is item six under the agreement where it talks about parking lot maintenance, it says the town agrees to maintain the parking lot, including potholes and restriping. I just wanna make sure that, that there's no confusion that this section of pavement of whose jurisdiction it's under.
I don't think so, I, I don't think they think that that's theirs, um, and maybe Ashley can shed a little bit more light.
Well, maybe I weigh in as well, so, that, that right-of-way and that apron is part of the DOT, it is not part of the real estate of the Waxaw Women's Club, so, they would not then be able to grant us anything relative to that. Early on, if I remember hearing it right, we were talking about that with them, uh, that did not end up in the final, uh, document, and so, here we are, we have, uh, what we had last time, uh, maintenance of the real estate there, basically and specifically the parking lot area, is ours, just as it was in the previous agreement, uh, no changes to it, but the, uh, the apron there that's broken up, that's, that's a DOT thing, again, they're gonna have to take care of that.
Perfect, I just wanna clarify, just to be sure that we're all on the same page.
And just an FYI, too, I, I did check in on the history, the pothole history, I guess you could say, with our, with our, uh, resident historian in the town, and we've had one instance where we have repaired a pothole within that property, and it was when a utility pole was pulled out of there, so we have had one instance since this has been in effect since twenty seventeen.
Well, I, I was there, it's funny, I parked in that lot today, and I didn't notice anything other than that apron area, and I just wanted to make sure there was no sort of disagreement between whose responsibility it would be to fix that, and it sounds like it's N C DOT's, because it's their right-of-way.
Yes, that's correct, and I, I believe Women's Club understands that, too, in your discussions.
Yeah, when we had a discussion with them about whose responsibility it was, that's really where we landed, is if it, if it's their responsibility, they would fix it, but it's in, in C DOT right-of-way, so, it would be on them.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments, understandings on it? Todd, you've been elevated to historian, that's, that's pretty good, so, alright, we'll move on on this stuff, I'm gonna look for a motion to approve, uh, this item on the, um, on this old business, so, may I have a motion, please?
Just a quick question, Charlie, uh, my association with the, is, is the, able to vote for this, or should I?
Are you on the board?
His wife is.
That, that's not a problem, your wife being on the board.
Very good, thanks, Federer, appreciate that. Alright, uh, looking for a motion, then.
I'll make a motion to approve the Waxaw Women's Club parking lease.
As it is written. Alright, motion's up, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, we'll move on unanimous again. Alright, move down to new business, back to the Town Manager. We've got the CRTPO, uh, the alternate delegate, I'll let you, uh, explain that one.
Thank you Mayor, so, Mayor Pappas is our Waxaw delegate to the CRTPO Board, that's the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, and there is an alternate that is chosen that can serve as the delegate in the, uh, in the absence of the mayor. Commissioner Westlick currently holds that, uh, role, and has requested that she be removed from that board as the alternate. Commissioner Hall has expressed interest in serving as the alternate delegate to the CRTPO Board. This appointment historically has come up during the, uh, the meeting, um, in December, after the election, the organizational meeting, but of course, in, in some instances where, uh, there's a change, a recommended change, and this obviously would have to be brought up in between, uh, that time, so we're just sticking with the process that the board typically does at that organizational meeting to, uh, make the, make the appointment, move that forward.
And to be clear, this is because of Commissioner Westlick being able to accept another, another role on the Downtown Business Association, so, alright, so, what is up, seems like that, uh, I have suggested as well, uh, to make that replacement with Commissioner Hall, and so, any thoughts, comments along that line, I think everybody's got a role now, uh, in here. You're, you're, you're filling up the role, that's good. Anyway, any thoughts, comments, recommendations? Alright, I'm gonna look for a motion, if you would, please?
Motion to appoint Commissioner Hall to serve as alternate delegate on the CRTPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Alright, that motion is up, all in favor?
Aye.
All the way around. Now, you can be a late vote, so that's okay, and since I chair that, I'll make sure that, uh, Raleigh is, um, in tow with the change, Jason, and we'll make sure that Suzanne gets the right information and correct, so, appreciate that, thanks. Alright, item number two, looks like we have Assistant Chief Dexter Wilson up, endorsement of the Patrick Lee Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program Grant Application, that's a long title. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, board, I, I have, before you announce, the Patrick Lee-Hi Bulletproof Vest Partnership. It's a chance for us to save some money over the next two years, uh, for our bulletproof vests that naturally expire, uh, every five years. So, the grant team located the grant opportunity for us, after they located it, they turned it over to me, and then, uh, we currently have vests with a five-year lifespan, we have fifteen of those expiring in the next two years. Uh, and the reason for that, we, we purchased fifteen vests one year and another fifteen two years later, uh, when we changed over to the outer vest. So, there's a lot of price, or a lot of money we're gonna spend at one time. Uh, luckily, with the team locating this grant, it's gonna save us four hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cent toward each vest, and that's fifty percent of the maximum allowable, allowable, which is eight hundred and ninety-five dollars per vest. Uh, unfortunately, they're kinda behind times on the price of vest, so currently, we pay fourteen ninety-nine seventy-seven, fourteen hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-seven cent per vest. That includes tax shipping, and it includes, includes all the outer carrier pouches, and, uh, everything that goes along with those vests. Uh, fifteen vests would cost the town twenty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollar, or ninety-six dollars and fifty-five cent without this grant funding. Uh, with the funded grant, the vest will cost fifteen thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and five cent, savings to the town would be six thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cent. Uh, the vest would have to be purchased first, and then reimbursement for that when we turn in the receipts to, the grant company. Uh, any questions about the grant?
Sounds like a, uh, good investment, I guess these things do have a active life.
Right.
So, they expire, and I don't know that I'd wanna be wearing an expired vest, so, any questions for our presenter? Alright, this one should be pretty easy, I'm gonna ask then for consideration, like a motion, please?
Make a call, a motion to approve resolution, R E S two zero two three zero one eight, endorsing the Town of Waxaw's application for the Patrick Lee Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program Grant Application for six thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents.
Alright, very good. Alright, that motion is up, all in favor?
Aye.
All the way around, thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant Chief, thank you very much. Alright, next item up, Pay and Classification Plan, looks like we have Ms. Wendy up, Wendy, welcome, good to see you.
Thank you, good evening, um, I'm here just to request adoption of the Pay and Classification Plan effective July first, twenty twenty-three, to reflect the three percent coal that was just adopted in the budget.
Alright, so this is obviously in concert with the budget?
Absolutely.
And, uh, no effective changes on that, as I understand it?
Right.
Alright, so any questions for our H R person here? Alright, it's gonna be the motion maker this time.
Motion to adopt the updates in the Pay and Classification Plan effective July first, twenty twenty-three.
Alright, motion's up, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, very good, thank you Wendy, a lot of work went into that as well, part of the budget process. Alright, Mr. Kelly, I think you're up, first reading of proposed ordinance, establishing regulations for loading and unloading zones, referred to by Mr. Neil earlier.
Good evening, James Kelly, Traffic Transportation. Tonight, I'm just going to give you all the first reading of our, our proposed loading and unloading zone ordinance.
Closer to the mic, if you could.
And then, um, at the June twenty-seventh meeting, we'll have the, the final second reading, and, along with any comments that you may have. So, just to give you guys some background on the, on the, where this is, where it's located, it's our downs, our Downtown Waxaw Pedestrian Improvement Project, and it's along East North Main and North Providence Street. We received multiple feedback from several businesses along both North Providence as well as East North Main, so we've incorporated that into the ordinance, and then, so essentially, we are providing dedicated areas for vehicles to load and unload materials and goods. Another, another key factor of loading and unloading zones is that by providing these larger vehicles an area to pull off from the main one-way traffic flow, you promote smooth traffic flow by accommodating those larger vehicle types that may be unloading goods for a set period of time. In essence, there's two parking spaces on East North Main that we're converting to loading and unloading area, that area is designated between the hours of eight o'clock to five o'clock P M, and then we're converting three of the angled parking spaces on North Providence, that designated time is eight to five, or eight to four, excuse me, we adjusted that to eight to four, to accommodate, uh, business operations. So, today, we're just asking for, staff is requesting any feedback that you may have on the proposed loading and unloading ordinance, to get that updated and returned to you all by the June twenty-seventh meeting.
Alright, well, thank you for that, I think, uh, we've had some valuable input from all of our owners that are around there, and I think that's a good pivot by, uh, all the engineering team to, uh, make sure that happens, and any other consideration going forward, we'll certainly listen to, so, any thoughts, comments, we've seen that, now, I like this new screen, by the way, so, uh, you can actually see this stuff, so, as I remember right, I've been back up a slide or two?
Sure.
And just show that designation there, so, um, this is what we're looking at, added those, uh, areas in red, uh, to that loading zone, so there's the, uh, east side of the street there, and also the frontage on, in front of, uh, Dream Chasers and, uh, Cork and Ale.
Correct, so that'd be good. Right there, again, just to reiterate, is eight to five for the one on... Right there, again, just to reiterate, it's eight to five for the one on East North Main and eight to four for the section on North Providence.
Any reason not to make that consistent?
We can make it consistent and just do eight to four for both sections.
Do we wanna check in with the other owners just in case they have a different hour requirement? So say the one in Cork and Ale, wanna take a look at that? So could you do that?
Yes, we can.
If they're okay with it? I'm gonna suggest that's at least, I wanna hear that, that's probably our comments, mine anyway. Commissioner Simpson?
I'm in full support of that. When I spoke into the business owner, Mr. Neal, it made a lot of sense to me, at four o'clock, because there, there are food trucks that need to do prep work and so forth, and they could. Unfortunately, there'd be an hour where technically they'd be in violation of the ordinance, so. Four o'clock, I think, all around, makes it less confusing for enforcement.
Well, consistent. Commissioner Simpson?
So the question that I have is, I know that we had, was it a food truck ordinance? Does this? I understand, but we have a food truck ordinance, and I didn't know if any of that would need to be updated to reflect it being in the loading zone.
So with this ordinance for the loading and unloading zone, we have actually designated the North Providence Street to accommodate food trucks after the 4:00 PM timeframe.
But, so, what I'm saying, cuz you're-
Bottom bullet here states that.
Okay, so this would supersede our food truck ordinance that we have with allowing so many parking spots to be taken up by a food truck?
I'll let you address that specifically. That's the assumption, but I'll let you address that specifically.
So this particular ordinance would only apply to North Providence Street. If you are looking at other streets, you would still have the typical three parking space requirement for those food trucks to accommodate that.
Yeah, I just did, I know it's kinda like a dot in the i's and cross in the t's. I just wasn't sure if there's any sort, if loading, having this will be okay for that.
Yes, so, so this particular area on North Providence Street, there's language incorporated within the ordinance that will support the utilization of food trucks outside the 4:00 PM interval.
And the other food truck ordinance that we have.
And we can go back and take a second look and update that if needed.
Okay, yeah, I just wanna make sure there's congruence there, like something, so everything's, yeah, exactly.
Absolutely, no, good thought. All right, any other thoughts, comments, contributions? All right, this is for information today, so it'll come back up. Yes, sir.
I was just wondering, is there enforcement built into this, or is that gonna be added to something else?
So the enforcement would be just a civil penalty, so it's really, we're looking at a potential $50 maximum of up to $50 fine if some vehicles were abusing the particular area, say, like you had a passenger vehicle parking in that loading and unloading zone during the hours of eight to four, when they're designed, when that area is specifically designed for those delivery vehicles.
So how would a property owner or a business owner proceed to call up the police department or someone else and say, hey, there's a car parked there?
Really, they would just have to report the issue, and then our finding, our enforcement team can get involved if we do decide to proceed with the civil penalty action.
So it's, so to bring up another question, so it's considered a loading or unzoning, loading or unloading zone, not necessarily a commercial? Cuz I know like in the big cities, you would have only for commercial plated trucks or things, as opposed to me as a citizen could pull up and, you know, take out my, something from Funky Monkey and put it in my car.
So really, if, so if we're looking at it that way, yes, a normal citizen could pull up for the purposes of loading and unloading, not to exceed the timeframe of fifteen minutes. So if they start to just sit there parked for hours and hours upon end, then once that's reported, recorded, then it can be enforced.
Is there anything, cuz it's loading and unloading, let's say it's during those hours of eight to four, and I wanted to run in and pick up my takeout order? Would that? I don't know, maybe I'm overthinking things, but-
I think we're losing the spirit of the loading and unloading. When we start to allow something like that, I think it probably needs to be a little more specific in the language that maybe prevents something like that. And again, I agree with it being also in concert with our food truck ordinance. I know there's a, a size or a measured spot, and the way that is kinda, or it's gonna, gonna be striped. I don't know, I, I think the outside band might be a little bit wider than three spots, and the inside band is probably three, two or three spots. I don't know.
Are you gonna have signage there as well, besides?
Yes, so signage is the key, signage is what allows us to enforce. So once the signage is in place, then it becomes enforceable.
I mean, alls I can just see is people parking there, running over for an ice cream cone and, you know, coming back out.
And it loses the spirit of what we're trying to do.
Correct.
We're gonna have you out there and police it.
You're on the enforcement team.
I just want the ice cream.
You just volunteered.
I just want the ice cream.
You just want the ice cream, you don't wanna work for it?
Nope.
Any other comments?
All right, so if you would address those issues, bring them back and make sure that we're all in understanding. We certainly will have your report before we have the next meeting, so if you could do that for us, we'd appreciate it. Any other thoughts, comments? One more.
One more, it's just I wanna say for somebody who does occasionally use a handicapped parking spot, for my dad, that it's good to see that we're not losing that, we're just relocating it across the street, so we will still have access for handicapped.
That is correct.
Two spots on that corner.
All right, good comments, all the way around. You can address all those and clean it up. I appreciate that, James, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, there's nothing on closed session today. I'm gonna drop down to the town leadership reports, Town Manager Jeffrey Wells, the mic is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I have several things to share this evening, so first, today, a couple of us in the office got our first glimpse at the Waxaw Library renovation, so we got our first look at that and provided some comments. And so they'll circle back around and provide those to us, and we plan on bringing that forward to the board to take a look at probably in August. So that's the, the schedule for, for that. And then this, let's see, should be my last reminder of this, I think, shred day rescheduled to June 24th. So that's a couple of Saturdays from now. And just another state budget update, both chambers are in the middle of their conference budget process, which is all done behind closed doors, so it may feel like there's a, a slow period in the budget process, but that's not really the case, so I'm told. So hopefully, we'll know more about where we stand on our appropriation requests by the end of the month. But I'll continue to get mic updates on that on a weekly basis.
And that's from Deborah, correct?
Yes, that's from Deborah. Town campus update, storm drainage installation is ongoing tomorrow. In relation to the storm drainage, they'll have to do a little bit of blasting, so that will be tomorrow. So, but as far as, it's not like some giant show or anything like that, it's, it sounds like a little firecracker and then a poof of smoke. So that's all it'll, that's all it'll be, but that will be happening tomorrow, cuz there is some rock in the way of some of the path of some of the storm drainage pipe.
Some cars are louder.
Yep, that's right. They've begun the work on the easement for the sewer tie-in along the cliff of the property there in the back of-
School property?
School, so they're clearing that out, and we'll start making that connection now that the school is out. They'll be working from the sewer, the manhole, where they're gonna tie in back towards the campus site, that's underway. Most of the utility relocations are done. They're still waiting on one utility provider to finish up so that they can remove some of the old poles. And then once they do that, they'll be able to finish the grading on Kensington Drive. So that's still unfinished, but it's not hampering any other work that's being done on-site right now. They should be pouring the slab for Town Hall either the end of next week or the beginning of the following week. All the footers are done, the plumbing's in the ground there, so they'll be going vertical time midsummer.
And we're actually getting our inspections, huh?
Yeah, yeah, that's exciting. The Public Services Parks and Rec Building, they still have a few more footing pours to do, but all the materials for that building is on-site. So I know we have it fenced, but on a nice sunny day, you can see in there pretty good. You can see how full the site is, the materials, and we're just on the site for our regular meeting this morning. It's exciting to see everything going on there.
That's great news. It's great to see that thing moving along so fast.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, once, once things go vertical, things really start going a lot faster. It's that initial site work, horizontal work, as I call it, that usually takes the longest.
So slab goes down, will be vertical in another two, three weeks?
Could be, weather-
Weather permitting.
-pending, yep. So that's all I have, thank you.
All right, appreciate that, any thoughts, comments? All right, Ms. Ashley, you're up this time.
Hi, guys. So I have lots of updates today, so with our downtown pedestrian improvement project, which you've heard a lot about tonight, we're still sharing those weekly updates with our businesses via email. We're also updating the website on a weekly basis, so if you go to waxaw.com/downtown-pedestrian-improvements, that's a lot. And if you go there, we have updates on everything that's happening each week as well as progress photos. This week, they are connecting the new water lines and then working on the knee wall brick. It looks really cool if you haven't been out there. And then they're working on that corner at East North Main and Broom, and I think Todd's gonna tell you a little bit more when he comes up. As far as ribbon cuttings go, we have one scheduled on Tuesday, July 11th, at nine A, yeah, at 9:00 AM. It's Patina Health Ribbon Cutting, and they're actually a virtual primary care company that's based in Philly. And so they're opening up their first North Carolina location here in Union County, which is exciting. So they're gonna hold their ribbon cutting at the Community Corner lot that morning.
What time is that?
That's at 9:00 AM. And then lastly, I wanted to give some updates on the Downtown Waxaw Association. So we had our second board meeting last week, the beginning of the week. We approved our budget, and then we're working through some fundraising plans in our policy manual right now. We're also working on scheduling a strategic planning session with our North Carolina Main Street Group in the fall, and that's something that's included with our accreditation and partnership with them. Our Promotions Committee created our Facebook and Instagram accounts, so if you don't follow us, go follow us at Downtown Waxaw on both Facebook and Instagram. We are also planning our first Friday's Art Walk that will start on Friday, August 4th. And that'll continue on the first Friday of each month from then on out. And then our Indie Retail Month is in July, so that's where we celebrate independent retailers all month, all month long. And we're gonna have a special shopping weekend on July 14th through 16th. And then lastly, our Economic Vitality Committee is working on doing a market analysis of downtown. This is something that our North Carolina Main Street Partnership works with us on. So they basically take a snapshot of downtown and the trade area, so where people are coming from, and tell us what they're spending their money on downtown, but then what we're losing money on, so where people are leaving downtown to purchase items. And so that'll give us a good idea of where our holes are, what types of businesses we could be attracting to downtown, or what assets we could be promoting more, so we're really excited about that. We'll be doing that in mid-July as well, so. Any questions?
That may be more revealing than the traffic study was.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be really interesting to see that data.
When is that gonna be completed?
Yeah, so Mike Doherty, who's with the Department of Commerce, is coming July 18th. I can send out an invite to anyone who wants to join us that day, it's, as I said, gonna be very interesting. Yep, I'll send it to you guys tomorrow.
Okay, great, appreciate that. All right, any questions for our presenter? All right, Ashley, thank you very much. Next up, Parks and Rec, Ms. Deana. Welcome to the party.
Hey, Deana Sivinski, you're a Park and Rec Director. Thanks for having me tonight. We're gonna go over a couple programs and events that are coming up. So your program guide is into the end of June. A new one will come out in about a week and a half. Coming up, we have Little Cooks with Fun Books tomorrow. It's actually going to be here in this room with, PD's gonna be helping us out for tomorrow. Charcuterie is on Thursday night, the 13th, uh, excuse me, Wednes- Wednesday, Thursday night, the 13th. We've got Mixology on Monday.
14th, right? 15th, is that the day?
Whatever, where are we? Thursday's the 15th.
Thursday or Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday's the 15th.
15th. Tomorrow is-
14th.
The 14th, 13th, okay. I got it mixed up on my thing, it's actually in July, so that is actually the 13th in July.
All right.
Tomorrow, we have Little Cooks and Fun Books tomorrow here. Then we have June 21st, next week with Hero, it's gonna be at Town Creek, we're gonna do rockets. The big one is June 28th, that is Water Day at Nesbit. That is like the big one for Hero, so come out and be ready to get wet. The Fire Department is a great partnership with that one. This weekend, the 17th, from 12 to 4, we have Juneteenth, and that is Community Corner and McDonald Street. We have lots of cool things, education, art, lots of cool music, Kids' Corner, face painting, 18 vendors. We are maxed out for that space, it's gonna be a fun time, please come and join us. Then we have next weekend, the 23rd, is a, I know a very special band, The Unknown Artist. I know, I've got, we got a couple fans in the room, they'll be with us on the 23rd at 7:00 at the Community Corner. We also will have extra food trucks and refreshments there to help out with the crowds, and we'll also be shutting down McDonald Street for that as well. Then, we have Fourth of July, our parade. So you have a cheat sheet in front of you that explains the pre-parade activities. We have some food trucks, Ms. Karen Johnson's going to be our grand marshal for the parade this year. And then also, we've got all of our emcees ready to do a shout-out to all of our participants. This is a great reminder for our citizens, we still looking for those entries to come in. Everybody likes to wait to the last minute, so come on in, go ahead and get your, your paperwork in. And we're also looking for leader volunteers to help out with the parade as well. So if you'd like to come volunteer with us that morning, we'd love to have you. Any questions about events and programs?
I like on the Fourth of July Parade, our MC stations. They're pretty good, good crew.
All good.
All right, any, we've got a lot of things coming up, a lot of things going on. Do pay attention to our events calendar, that's where you find most of the information when we can.
Yes, in front of you, actually, have their updated one, that's from July to next June. So you're all set for the year, and then, you know, we'll give out reminders through the year, but I wanna make sure that you have your laminated copy to get you all set for success.
One of my own.
Yes.
All right, thoughts and comments for Ms. Deana? All the way around, all right, well, you got your work cut out for you now, it starts.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
Summer head.
All right.
Thank you.
Deana, appreciate that. Next up, our resident historian. Public Service Director Todd Matthews, Todd, welcome.
How you doing? I've been kinda busy in public service.
Hadn't noticed.
Keeping all the greens nice and cut and PD cut and downtown looking good. We got a meeting next week with the sidewalk repairs, we're gonna start working on some of those. I talked to James a while ago, he's gonna try to get the bids out for paving next week. Trash service, the new schedule's all done and all the, we're ready to go with the trash pickup for this year. Working on the boardwalk in David G. Barnes Park, adding on the second part to it. We started doing repairs on the footbridge, it's going well, we got all the rails tightened up. We replaced a bunch of the bottom boards today up under the steps, so that's all going great. Downtown Grant's going good, having little issues with water, some of the old pipes is not wanting to hook up to the new pipes, but that's normal. We cut our eight-inch water line last night, they said they had all the water off, and next thing you know, we're in a swimming pool. Didn't know where to cut it off at, but we finally figured it out. Talked to the developer that's doing the townhouses on North Broad Street, I just got a text from him. All the paperwork's been turned in to the county to abandon one water line, and once they get it abandoned, we'll pave all that. And the biggest thing is tonight, at 10:00, we're gonna try to tap into a 12-inch water line, so we gotta cut the water off, and it goes, Allah, how we mine will be without water from 10:00 to hopefully no later than 1:00 or 2:00. But you never know, I'll let the fire chief know because White Oaks is on that- But never know. I'll let the fire chief know because White Oaks is on that line and they got sprinkler system. So they don't keep a truck in that area, I think. But other than that, hopefully it's going to go well. The one we did on, I guess it'd be East or West North Main, we did that one in an hour and three minutes. So hopefully this one will go that good. They said eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock, but you never know. These old pipes, they corroded and break in and you just look at them wrong and they break, fall apart.
They come apart in your hand when you take it apart as soon as you touch it.
So we had to replace one today that fell apart on us.
Well, that's the, that's what happens in a hundred and thirty-four-year-old town.
Oh, yeah.
Those things happen.
It's only good when we're all done, all new water, so everything's going to be nice.
Well, I want to commend you and Parks and Rec and all your staff between the two of you, keeping that thing up and running during lots of commotion out there.
Oh, yeah.
The traffic control, the pedestrian control, you guys have done a great job on keeping that in spite of my help.
It'll try to put a sidewalk back Thursday on Providence. So hopefully that'll be, we got all the water lines laid in today.
Good.
Or they did. So hopefully that'll go back Thursday.
You can say we, we are a team.
Yeah, yeah. We had a food truck stuck last night. We had to take the skid steer and lift her back up and push it. And then we had to unhook it from the truck and take the excavator and pull it around. We had a mess, but we got it done.
You guys are getting good at moving traffic off of high points.
Oh, yeah. Well, we had another truck stuck what, two weeks ago too?
Well, another one. Yeah, car hauler. I saw that. Yeah, stuck on. I, I actually talked to D O T Rail about that issue, so they're going to work on some things. I think they're going to try to designate different routes for these guys and probably have to put up some additional signage like they used to have before. I remember there used to be a, a high point sign at those intersections that disappeared.
They took it down when they redid the intersections where they put the concrete in.
Yeah.
But they still didn't lower it down enough and they still get hung.
Yeah, so I, I talked to them, so we'll follow up. And Matt, that's another one for you as well to keep on with those guys. So.
They got air on their trailers and some of them forget to raise them up a little bit. That's when they get hung. And once they get hung, you can't raise them up.
No, they're stuck. He was wheels off the ground. I saw that one, so.
Thanks to W T Norwood, he poured it off for us.
I saw that. So, yeah, we've employed a lot of friends in those efforts.
And luckily, two railroad workers were there, so. But they told us to call them because they wouldn't listen to them. So we called, they gave us the number. We called it.
That's funny.
Everything was good.
All right. Well, appreciate everything that you do, Mr. Historian. So.
Yeah.
New designation.
There was a light here a little bit.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, the Board of Commissioners, any thoughts, comments? Anybody want to share anything for the good of the group? All right, Ms. Anne?
Yes, today in, we had a lot of our citizens and local students graduate. So Parkwood High School and Cuperson High School both had their graduations. I want to congratulate the class of twenty twenty-three and good luck to all the rising seniors for twenty twenty-four.
Wow, they're out on the streets now. Oh, my goodness. There we go. Careful.
And with those graduations, we can congratulate Commissioner Westlock's daughter, Meredith, who also graduated. She's part of Cuperson.
Another one off the books, huh? Literally.
Last one.
Last one, for now, anyway, right? I know, that scared you, didn't it? Yeah, that's right. Well, congrats to all those who have made it through the process. So it's good to see them go through it. Any other thoughts, comments? Good of the group? All right, seeing, hearing none, seeing none. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Motion to adjourn? Oh, he's just lighting up the chong over there. So, all right, motion to adjourn is up. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody.